Okay, um, do we have public comment?
Yes.
Both of us.
We both have a public comment for tonight. All right, so I'll go first. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chloe Whitaker and I'm the Adult Programming Director at the Troy Public Library. I'm addressing the board today with sincere concerns about the current state of workplace safety and the associated impact on our team's morale and retention. I understand that tonight there may be a discussion about a letter from staff addressed to the board regarding safety concerns at the Troy Public Library dated October 26, 2023. I'm not here tonight to add to the contents of the letter, but I would like to speak to the intent behind drafting and sending it. As my colleague Will is also going to address tonight, we do not believe that we violated the library's policy on internal disputes with our letter since the issues we referenced referred to the state of affairs at the library as a whole and affected not just one or two people, but all the employees here. The grievance policy on page nine of the employee handbook states that its purpose is to promote harmonious relations in the workplace and an equitable adjustment of any problems which may arise. This letter that we sent was not about resolving a dispute between two employees or addressing an issue one employee had with their supervisor. It is not about relationships between people in the library at all in any form. That said, I want to state and reiterate that we are committed to following the board's guidance on next steps, whatever they decide to say or issue, or let us know what they would like us to do. I bring up the policy because the response to our letter thus far has been incredibly disheartening. The letter was not an indictment of department heads, yet internally, the only discussions being had are about communication between staff and department heads, which is not unimportant, but it was not the focus of the letter. And there has been silence when it comes to the substance of the letter. The letter was at minimum a cry for help from staff for this institution, but the entire response so far has been about procedure violation. One statement from the director stating that he cared about the safety of his employees and would be looking into the matter further with the board, without the board, would have gone a long way. The issues brought up in our letter are, I believe, all the more important given the lack of proactive measures taken by leadership, particularly our director, to address these concerns, let alone admit that the concerns exist or that the problems exist. It's disheartening to witness talented colleagues leaving our organization due to an environment that is perceived as unsafe. I think it's worth pointing out that while most of our department heads and our director have been employed by the library for years, most of the staff at all the other levels have been here less than two years, and many have been here less than one, which is not the sign of a healthy and thriving institution. I think it's critical for the board to be aware of these challenges as they pose a threat not only to our workforce, but also to the long-term stability and success of the institution. And I urge the board to initiate a comprehensive review of the current safety protocols addressing specific issues contributing to the perceived lack of safety and that you would consider implementing measures that will rebuild trust with library staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chloe.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Um, yes, I'll go. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Will Senior and I'm one of the newer employers, employees here at Troy. Ever since I started here, the reference staff has been incredibly helpful. However, I experienced my first encounter with one of our problem patrons on July 20th, my ninth day of employment. I was told by the circulation staff that the patron in question was sitting on an old dictionary. I addressed the patron immediately as such behavior violates our code of conduct, uh, which prohibits misusing, stealing, or damaging library property. And I was promptly screamed at by them. This was witnessed by my department head and the circulation department head. The patron said she will continue to do it. She asked for my supervisor, and Ian, my supervisor stepped in, reiterating the policy for the patron. Eventually, the patron asked for the library director. Afterwards, the director informed me, the head of reference, and the head of circulation of his decision to let the patron continue sitting on the dictionary. In other words, he did not back me up. I learned early on that when the director tells us he will back us up, it is merely lip service. This is just one story that I have. I know many staff have stories of this, at least I've heard some of them from other staff. However, I can only speak for myself. Before I continue, I stand by this letter 100%. The second line of the letter says, "We care deeply about the library and love working at this institution, but concerns about our personal safety while working here have led to increased anxiety and stress, and in many cases have led to us looking for employment elsewhere." This line, as every line, was not written cavalierly, but thoughtfully and truthfully. I am one of those people, and I turned in my letter of resignation yesterday, and I am not the first reference librarian to do this. There has been talk about the grievance procedure having not been followed. However, this is simply untrue. The grievance procedure, as I will read lines from, comes from pages nine and 10 of the Employee Handbook, which states, "All staff members are expected to cooperate with their supervisors and coworkers in attaining the common goals of the library and resolving problems between employee and supervisor. The following grievance procedure should be followed." The operative words here are between employee and supervisor. This points to the fact that it was never meant to address issues that numerous employees are experiencing with the institutional culture. Now, some of you might be saying, "Well, Senior, you're nitpicking." To that, I would say, read the rest of the policy. It goes on to state that "The goal of the grievance procedure is to formulate a plan to eliminate the problem which gave rise to grievance." These are clearly focusing on isolated incidents. Everything focuses on one problem, one employee and their supervisor, not 16 employees under the circulation, YPS, and reference departments. By the way, that's the number of employees that signed the letter. The letter details systemic problems listing the following incidents: the K-2 incident, which happened before I came on April 6, 2023, books being thrown over circulation desk on May 4, 2023, and the 40 incidences listed or mentioned in the letter that occurred between April 6 and mid-October. There is also further proof that this policy was not meant to address an institutional issue. Step one is to go to one's immediate supervisor with the problem they have with them. However, I did not have an issue with Ian, my supervisor, and the head of reference department. I have an issue with how the institution as a whole treats our safety. Ian is one person. He cannot single-handedly fix these issues, and nor do I expect him to. That is why I signed this letter, because that is the issue it addresses. Lastly, this grievance was about the safety of staff, not whether or not one person is responsible for processing magazines or any other banality of library work. Hence why such a grievance procedure is generally not used in serious matters in most institutions. I used to be a library director. I secured New York State construction aid for almost a million-dollar project, brought in over $30,000 in grants, and have conducted New York State trustee trainings. There are three duties that library trustees are entrusted with: the duty of care, the duty of loyalty, and the duty of obedience. But I believe the first two are most applicable in this instance. According to the New York State handbook, "Duty of care dictates that a trustee or board member must act in good faith and exercise a degree of diligence and care and skill an ordinary prudent individual would use under similar circumstances in a like position." I am asking you all to exercise the degree of care the law calls you to when deciding future decisions on our safety. Duty of loyalty means trustees or board members owe allegiance to the institution and must act in good faith with the best interest of the organization in mind. It is within the best interest of Troy Public Library for the staff's concerns to be heard as they have been neglected by the director in the past. If the board chooses to waive the grievance, I think it emphasizes how policy, or really a misinterpretation of it at that, is more important than the persons who work at this institution. I'm done.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you so much, Will.
Do we have any other comment? Okay, thank you very, very much. And on that note, we're gonna continue. Um, Treasures Report, please. She's looking at you.
All right, but I'm not the treasurer.
This is way to take me a little while. I almost sent you some email. Then realized, no, we need to go to Marie.
Um, the Finance Committee is going to propose two different motions tonight. The first motion is to accept the bills for this month of $172,368.53. So I so move.
That's acceptable.
Uh, two seconds. All in favor?
Motion carries. I'm, okay, unanimously. Uh, the second motion, would you read the second motion, please?
I have not had a chance to re-type this, so we're just gonna have to be as, what's the right word? We're just gonna read this the best I can. The motion is that expected bills connected to the ARPA project be paid by the executive director before the next board meeting as long as those do not go over our expected total cost and that there is availability of Troy Public Library funds, with the understanding that they will be approved at the next scheduled board meeting.
Is there a second? Two seconds? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. Motion's carried.
Thank you. Right. Um, we now have our consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes. There's no actual admin committee report. There's a building committee report, an outreach report, an upper Hudson report, and the presidency report. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Okay, Senior. Um, any discussion?
I had a question about the building committee. The minutes said that the next meeting is, I believe, the 29th, while the website says that it's the 22nd.
We, yeah, we had to reset that meeting, um, because it usually is.
Website didn't get updated, but we updated at the meeting. The website didn't get updated, yeah.
If the minutes are correct, then the website needs to be updated.
Okay, and are the new committees, are they being posted on the website? The meetings, like there was an administration committee meeting and an outreach committee, was that posted?
It's in the Dropbox, and everyone got a copy of who's on it. I'm not sure. And yes, they are. I did look to see which date, but it is, it's always, there's always a page up on the lobby that says every meeting, and it gets refreshed, so when one's off, the next one comes on, so it's always redone.
I do have, um, just a quick thing about that. Um, I don't have the dates for the outreach committee meeting and the admin committee meeting, so if you can give those meeting dates to me, I'll definitely make sure that gets posted.
When we start, outreach is going to be regularly scheduled at this point. And admin is, um, more as needed.
Yep.
But we will be having a meeting soon, right?
Yeah.
Admin, yeah.
Not any meeting is supposed to be posted for the public?
Yes. Yes. So if you could just let me know, I can make sure to post it wherever we normally do.
It's up there, if you ever look.
Thank you, Joy.
On the website.
And on the website, yes. So once in a while, there's a glitch where we change it. It happens. Um, just a comment, I'll make this generally, that, um, meeting notes are literally a picture of that moment. They're not updates of what happens afterwards, just so if anyone's writing any kind of committee meeting minute, if something happens afterwards, there, you can do a separate piece that says this is the update, but it shouldn't be in the meeting notes. Otherwise, so we have for a second, do we? So we had discussion on the approval to accept the consent agenda?
Yep. Yes. You're asking, you're asking for approval, too.
Okay, done.
Freda.
I'm Freda Marzon. I'm the president of the Friends of the Troy Public Library. I've met you unofficially, and I've met the rest of you for other times. Um, I'm here today to give you a report on the 2023 appeal. Um, in March of 2023, I'm gonna say things that most of you know, but in an effort to orient our two new board members, I'm gonna do a little bit of history, very little bit of history, but a little bit of history. In March of this year, uh, the Friends of the Troy Public Library signed an eight-month memorandum of understanding with the trustees of the library and the administration. In this MOU, we agreed to take responsibility for the library's 2023 appeal. This appeal was launched in May of 2023. Um, and here's the process we used. A letter with a return envelope was sent to 1,700, almost 1,800 households. This list was comprised of former donors, those who voted on the library budget in 2022, um, and the Friends of the library who were not on either list. A follow-up email was sent to the Friends email list, which consists of current and lapsed members. To be a member of the Friends, you have to pay $20 dues or $15 dues. Um, but the follow-up email yielded very few responses. All told, 150 households made donations with a gross of $12,445. Uh, we chose to hire a consultant to draft, format, and do the mailing of the appeal. We were extremely happy with the product, and those of you who received it, you should have received it, anyway. You'll understand what I mean by that. The cost, in addition to our costs, for acknowledging the contributions and sending banking notes came to $2,600, giving us a net balance of $98.41. That's the net of the 2023 of you. Uh, despite hiring now, so any questions about what I've said so far?
A comment? So it's substantially less than what the library usually got for its annual.
We have no idea what the library usually gets.
I would say it's probably 20,000.
Where are you basing those figures on?
Just past three years.
It used to come from the library itself.
Although it has been going down.
Has it?
Yeah.
And then there were expenses that would come out of it, just as you had expenses coming out of yours.
No, we had no idea what the benchmark was for, uh, for our appeal, and people still donate directly to the library. So that, uh, one of the, uh, former presidents of the board, of the trustees and of the Friends, uh, recently died, and in her obit, she asked that in lieu of flowers that are intended to be made to the library. So that happens.
Alice's food?
Yeah.
Alice's food?
I don't know. And there was somebody else who lost it.
Yeah, so that has happened, that has happened. So, and we have no idea how much the library gets directly. We only know what we get directly. Um, any other questions or comments? Despite hiring out the creation and the implementation of the mailing, it was a tremendous amount of work. Um, we created the first draft, and we collected stories from staff for feedback from patrons, why the library was important to them. Uh, and, uh, and these were comments that patrons had shared with library staff, so we collected those. We edited the donor list and corrected all the zip codes and the spelling of names. So you can imagine looking at, uh, the voter rolls, and you know how you signed your voter roll, you know, you went like that if you printed. Yeah, so deciphering how people sign a voter roll was a trick in and of itself. Um, uh, but the main reason was because each individual mailing costs money. We wanted to eliminate any duplicates. We wanted to eliminate any mistakes. We didn't want these letters to come back. And mostly, you know, there were really very few this time, but it was an enormous task to get these lists cleaned up. And then what we did, we tracked all the donations, provided receipts, and thank you notes to people. We had to say, in most cases, we sent thank you notes because we didn't have email addresses, so we couldn't do any kind of, um, you know, online kind of receipt. So these activities are in addition to our regular revenue generating activities. This is the selling and distribution of all the donations that come to, book donations that come to the library. The library takes some for the collection, but most come to us. And we have a variety of ways that we distribute these, but mostly through the sale of books. And so this includes the book seller, which is in Lansingburg, pop-up book sales at the farmer's market. Um, at Seasons Cafe, we have an annex of the book seller at the Seasons Cafe. The I Love the Library event, which is happening this Sunday, and I'm gonna come back to that, which is another, another important fundraiser for the library. Um, so plus, those are the revenue generating kinds of things that the Friends do. We do outreach, we do promotional activities. We, anytime we're out there in the public, whatever the library is doing, like the vote. Uh, we did a lot of work this year to make sure that people got out and voted. So at the pop-up at the farmer's market, we gave them bookmark. We asked people if they were Trojans. And if they were, uh, we gave them notice about the vote. And this year, partially because of the candidates, a lot because of the candidates, the vote turnout was really good this year. It was a very good turnout this year relative to other years. It helped that there were four candidates. You know, that was really something special. So, um, we do, we publicize events. We have publicized programs, um, and at both branches. So, um, what I'm concerned about is you all have been very, very good about thanking us. Um, and at the Fall Fest, uh, we got this two wonderful cards from the staff of the library thanking us for what the Friends do. But, and we're really concerned about taking on the responsibility for the yearly appeal by ourselves. We don't have the people power to do it. Um, and, uh, we need a more cooperative effort on the part of the trustees, the administration, and us. Questions or comments?
So is that some, so is this something that the outreach committee could take on?
Maybe not. One of the questions is, would be, is would it be more appropriate for certain things to continue to be contracted?
I don't, I don't know what you mean, contracted with the.
Are you talking about the?
Writing the letter, but, but all the clerical work that goes into doing that.
That's you in front.
That does, yeah. All the.
And that stuff that's relatively easy to contract.
Or maybe it goes back to the way it was. The library did it.
Yeah, but that's the way I do.
But I thought there was an issue with the library doing it, which was why the Friends were asking.
There's an issue because I think that we, philosophically, should move on from the Association Library to the proper district library that we are. As a tax-supported institution, people are still kind of hanging on to the old way of thinking.
There was a question as to whether it was appropriate for the library to be asking.
It was a question. When I went to Nyla last year, the attorney said that they had asked the controller's office, and the controller's office felt it was inappropriate for libraries, public library districts, to directly raise funding. It's not a law. It's not a, even an opinion by the controller.
It tells us we can't do it.
No.
It's fine.
No.
It's just an opinion.
It's not something we can do.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not illegal. It's not, you know.
Yeah.
But I think it's a matter of appropriateness, and that's why I suggested that the Friends take on the job. What she just described, all the work, is what Joy and I did for the last 30 years. So it does take a lot of time. It takes us time away from the other things that we're supposed to be doing.
And I did confirm with Cole Adams, who put this in one of her Ask Lawyer misses, and I talked to her after her section at, at Nyla, and asked her about the opinion. Unfortunately, the original people that Paul saw last year did not present this year because of illness, so I couldn't talk to them. That was very disappointing. But, um, I talked to Cole, and her answer confirmed what she wrote, that there is no opinion. There's no legislation, no, no regulation, and no opinion on it. Um, and that tax district libraries are, special district libraries are made fundraisers.
There's no formal opinion. The Controller's Office issues formal opinion that have a lot of weight. So this was in a discussion with the Controller's Office and the Controller.
But there's nothing.
It doesn't, it doesn't particularly matter.
No.
No, it's, but it's in keeping with the philosophy I'd like to see implemented, in that district libraries are tax-supported, and it's inappropriate for a small staff like ours to raise funds.
And then the Friends have a smug.
People are. Well, I mean, that's why the outreach, which is a combination of people from the board, the Friends have invited to be a part of it, there's staff on it, there's users gonna be on it. I don't know why that would not be maybe the case. There's a lot more people that would be involved in it. It wouldn't weigh so heavily on one group of people.
Wouldn't that be something? Did, did? It sounds like a good place to bring that conversation up in that committee and have that committee have that as an internal discussion, have the committee come forward to the board and say, "This is what we think we should do," right? Or that we.
You want to talk about?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
But there's no one objecting.
So there is, uh, there is overhead, too. I mean, if you.
I can't hear you, Paul.
There is overhead. When you take on the project, at least that's how we did it. We contracted for the printing, um, we contracted for the mailing, um, that sort of thing.
Well, and it wasn't reflecting.
And those people have to be paid, as you know.
Right, but we'd still be working with the Friends, so I would think that that would still, I mean, obviously, all this stuff would have to be figured out now, now, before we actually move forward.
Carolyn, I'm just with the outreach committee, not assuming, but you're saying we're just gonna like keep shunting responsibility, but we're gonna try to make it more of a collaborative.
Right.
That makes, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, uh, we would be working with the Friends, not just taking it all. Unfortunately, not taking it all off of your shoulders.
No, I think, I think what, what we're asking for is a more collaborative event. Um, that the, because, um, all of us are, I mean, the, we recognize that the trustees are also volunteers and have an enormous amount of work to do. We recognize that Joy is, you know, the only staff that Paul has, and she works half-time, does she work at night?
Well, she's full.
That's full-time.
She's working tonight in Florida.
Yeah, but all, but all, all the resources here are thin, okay? The, the point is, uh, you know, when we're dispatching people to sort books and sell books, and so we, um, all the resources we have are thin. And the question is, is there a way to distribute all the responsibilities so that it doesn't fall completely to one entity or another? And, and so if, in fact, the outreach committee, you know, I, I almost see, I mean, the outreach committees get really large, and, and when I, uh, Carolyn sent me the notes from the outreach committee. I mean, the outreach committees get really large and, and when I, uh, Carolyn sent me the notes from the outreach committee. The, um. The charge for the outreach committee is huge, you know, it's huge. And fundraising would be only, you know, a. A part of that. Um, and so figuring out how in fact. We can gather all our resources and pull in other resources. Um, I think would be really helpful. And, um, representing the friends, it would be really helpful. You know, I feel that personally, I feel because I carry so much of it, it's not because I have good volunteers. But because I carry so much of it. That, um. It's just too hard, it's just too hard.
You certainly put a, a real effort into it. I mean, you did a lot of things that aren't part of the norm, what was done before. Like adding in. Potential, uh, donors and.
Yeah, and we could do it since we had a bigger turnout for the vote this time, we have potentially more people on the. On the, on the voter list. But it means, you know, taking that voter list and comparing it to the list we have, making sure the addresses and the. The, the, the nitty-gritty of it is what drives people crazy, and it's very hard to hire that kind of thing out. You can in fact hire out drafting the letter, the mailing of the letter, the, um. You know, one of the things that we did this, we now have a mailing permit for, for, um, bulk mailing, the like. So one of the things we accomplished in the process of doing this is that we got ourselves. Um, certified, whatever the host office does, to do bulk mailing, um. So, you, you know, a lot of things happened that were really good. And, and I think that, I'm taking too much of your time really, but, um. So the foundation is a lot stronger than it was. Even when we, we did an appeal at, at the fifteenth anniversary of the friends, which is. And we did all that ourselves, we drafted the letter, I mean, we, you know, had it printed, we, we didn't stuff the envelopes, that was the activity we improved. But, um. But so. It's in a much better shape. The, going forward, the appeal is in a much better shape than it was. Uh, May of two thousand twenty-three. Um, but still, if we do it again. If that's what the library chooses to do as its major fundraiser thing, which is this letter. You know, um. Then it's in a much better shape than it was. Before, um, and but. We need help. That's the bottom line.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think that eight thousand dollars is pretty impressive. Especially because, I mean, that's a whole different mindset, which it's a letter from, from the friends rather than the library, I think there's some confusion that happens there and. I, I. Thank you very much, I think it was an excellent.
And also the DAX law is, it is, uh, reinforcing. As it once was.
Yeah.
As far as donations go.
So, uh, you all may have heard this story, uh, but one of the things we did, and I'm going to stop talking right after this, but you should hear this story. Um, so, uh, people are, uh, one, a patron and a friend of the library who uses Lansingburg a lot and has two little kids. Um, uh, her, uh, four or five-year-old was in preschool, was asked to name. Um, uh, the whole class was named to, asked to name their superheroes. Okay, and so they did regular superheroes except for this one boy who said. Michael.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's that kind of stuff, it's, it's that kind of stuff that makes. People feel wonderful, you know, I mean, makes staff feel wonderful, makes us feel wonderful. You know, it was the mom who told me, it's my cousin Tommy, it was the mom who told me. Yeah. I will.
Thank you for everything that you, the friends have done, and thank you for letting, telling, talking to us about it too.
One other thing. Yes. This is a big deal, this is a really big deal, this is Sunday. This is this Sunday, this is I Love the Library, this is Market Lock's. Uh, uh, event that they do for the library, twenty percent of all the books that are sold between eleven and three on Sunday. Go to the library directly. Plus, the librarians have come up with a wish list and the books will be available. For people to buy it and contribute it directly to the library, okay, so, um, and. Any books that are not sold on that day that were on the wish list and in the library, we buy.
For the library.
For the library, yeah. No, 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 so anyway. This and so there's stuff on Instagram, there's stuff on our website, there's stuff on the library website. There is stuff on the Friends, Friends page, um, you have to tell everybody.
Yeah.
The door off between eleven and three, the purchases have to be made on that day. If people order books. And pay for it that day, even if Market Block doesn't have it. Still, the twenty percent of that sale goes to.
And you can call in. You can call on the phone and paper and we'll call, so if you can't do that, you can.
And Market Block is also telling people who go shopping there about it too.
It's a big deal, they've been doing, I think Carolyn started it, I can't, I can't. Carolyn started.
Well, she worked.
When I work both places, makes sense, right?
So is it only for books, only?
No.
Book purchases?
No.
So it's any, any purchases?
I have my eye in a jigsaw puzzle. What is all the bow yours? Too cute.
Very fun to work with.
Okay. This is Alfreda. That it? Okay. All right.
Is this something that you want me to bring to the outreach committee, or is this, are we just going to?
I just guess you would put it on your agenda.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that that was the decision that was.
Well, no one objected, everyone thinks, at least talking about it, step one.
And we can do a motion on it.
I think we can just discuss it at outreach, I think we just talked about sending to committee not having to do it here. It, we don't usually vote on whether or not we put something on the number of committees.
So Carolyn was asking whether that was the decision, and that's how we make decisions.
I don't think every decision has to be formalized that way.
I'm not saying that every decision has to be, but.
I think this is one that can go without. Um.
Carolyn hasn't objected, I think so.
As long as I know that that's, yeah, what everybody is comfortable with now.
I already wrote it down on the seven, on this calendar for the seventeenth. Um, the circulation report.
Here's, um, what is this, expressed interest in seeing the statistics that we use for circulation. Um, so I put that in the Dropbox this time around, and what I thought is. Um. The main library and then, uh, separate out, uh, Lansingburg. And what I'm doing and what's of interest that leads to me is comparing our statistics today in two thousand and twenty-three. With two thousand and nineteen, which was the last normal year. Before the pandemic hit, so our figures for twenty. Twenty, twenty-one. Um. Even into twenty-twenty-two are, you know, pretty low. Uh, but they don't really decide what happens here on a regular, on a, on a normal. Um, you know. So we compare it to two thousand and nineteen and, um. If you go way down to grand totals, um. Okay, let me see, yeah, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, twenty-twenty-three is a little bit ahead of, uh, twenty-nineteen, about four percent ahead. Um, to date.
Can you say it one more time?
What's that?
Sorry, just wait, can you just repeat what you just said?
Twenty-twenty-three is about four percent ahead in grand total circulation.
I thought you said fourteen.
Four percent.
Combining the two, you're saying, Paul? Buying in Nancy Bergen.
No, that's just the main library.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that's page one, page two is Lansingburg. And then the rest is a breakdown of, uh, where circulation comes from. Um, different towns and, uh. Obviously, the majority of it comes from. City of Troy. Um. One of the trends that you can see here, if you look at twenty nineteen as opposed to twenty-twenty-three. Is a decrease in loaning things like CDs and, and art items. Um, and that's being overshadowed by, um, eBooks, overdrive, hoopla now. Um. And that circulation is up, but the circulation of actual physical. Objects. Like DVDs and CDs is down from two thousand and nineteen. So that's a sort of a trend you could see in this, uh, in these statistics. Um, now if you go over to Lansingburg, um. They still are a bit long, um, based and compared to, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, it's about thirty-one percent. Uh, behind the, uh, totals for two thousand and nineteen.
Kind of hard too, because you can't really say all those things that we see. An increase in like all the eBooks and, and hoopla and all that. You can't, that all goes to the main circulation statistics, right?
Yeah, no, that's true.
So you're kind of shortchanging the people from Lansing.
All the eBook circulation is counted under the main.
Right, so you're kind of shortchanging Lansingburg here. In my opinion. Not that I feel.
But, you know, if you compare directly book to book here, it's, um. Let's see, adult fiction, total fiction in two thousand and nineteen was ninety-nine nineteen. Uh, total, the, the total fiction. Eighty-nine, twenty. And then total nonfiction. Thirty-four, forty for twenty-twenty-three as opposed to forty-four, sixty. Uh, two thousand and nineteen, so. The book circulation reflects the difference as well.
But we know that a lot of people moved to, um, digital. Borrowing during the pandemic.
Yeah, no, that's true.
You know, I think. There was more of a conversion than would have occurred otherwise.
Hmm. Yeah, I, I think people got used to eBooks, people got used to the convenience and, um. Kept going. So, yeah, that's true. But same time, fewer people are buying CDs, buying DVDs, they're going with streaming, they're going with, you know.
So are we buying less?
Hmm.
Have we significantly reduced how much we spend on the?
We haven't bought us the DVDs, yeah, we've, we've actually reduced it.
It must be hard because there are special people who, who borrow those. So.
You know, I mean, we're not saying. They're not there, I mean, you know, yes, a lot of people still vote, yeah.
Then even if it's been reduced, it's still something we. We need to.
Yeah, yeah, no, that we do.
Thank you. Um, I think it'll be interesting, because, I mean, four percent, that could still be. Due to pandemic, I'm curious to see what it'll look like in the next year, quite frankly, to see if it's a similar downward trend or the plateaus or changes.
Yeah. Uh, and you know, it affects. Affects books too, I mean, it affects hard copy, but that's almost across the board from what I've seen, um. There's people of all ages who prefer print and people of all ages who prefer the eBook, I mean.
Do we know if, um, any other library in the Abraiding District has seen trends similar to this?
Is what?
Uh, has any other library in the district seen trends similar to this?
Oh, I think so, yeah, I, I see that. Pretty much.
Is, well, it's in this miscellaneous section, that's, that's the CDs, what else is in that?
What's that?
The miscellaneous and the other section, I'm just curious, what, what is miscellaneous in that, what, what falls into that?
Miscellaneous, other, um.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is that where CDs sit?
It's, uh, let's see, where we got that?
I got you. Are hotspots in this? I just know those are taken out quite a bit.
Yeah, although it's not a large amount, um. Where did they put that? I'm trying to figure.
May I answer that question as I create the report?
Yes.
Please.
So our miscellaneous is going to be things like hotspots, I'm sorry, this is Virginia speaking. Um, the hotspots, snowshoes, um, blood pressure monitors, uh. Any of those non-traditional materials, uh, that are, that are not broken down into other categories. Uh, and it can also include a small percentage of items that maybe are on the fly, meaning they don't have existing records. When they are brought up to the desk, they create a dummy record until they're returned. So, uh, it's a, it's a variety, it's kind of the catch-all for everything that's not explicitly broke down in other categories.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or?
The Troy library seemed to be a real outlier.
Yeah.
In comparison to the other, the figures for the others, uh, towns. I mean, even Albany, do you think that we included our electronic? Circulation? And the others didn't? I mean, I'm looking at.
In this year?
Well, I'm looking at the city of Albany and it says that, that's, she's referring to like, I'm sorry, I might be wrong.
Yeah, these are people from, who have Albany cards.
Yeah.
Borrowed from us.
From us?
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, that's just, that's just a breakdown, uh, people have cards from different places. And that's just a breakdown of that circulate, or, yeah, circulation.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah, and then, you know, it'll tell you, for example, under Troy, that it's huge, uh. The rest of it is just, you know.
Well, there's Green Island.
Tend to get Green Island because, uh, Green Island has the library.
Um, there's no one from Steventown, they only Steventown on Earth.
Where's water of the lake?
Where's the lake? Where's the library?
No, I, I figure, I'm just curious because, well, they're saying Green Island was because they had no librarian, but.
Not only that, but Green Island is one of the very few communities in this region that is considered uncircled.
Hmm.
Which means. They don't have a library and they don't pay anybody for library service.
Well, with what they say about electricity, they should be able to. Library.
They should be given it.
That's what we can find out.
But they're all they can, yeah.
So Virginia men- mentioned our library of things, snowshoes and blood pressure. Well, is there someplace where we list what we have about?
We're very early on, um. Our library of things right now consists of snowshoes.
What about blood pressure? Monitors, she mentioned that.
Um. We have those.
I borrowed them.
They're at Lansingburg, so, um, our library. Our library of things is very small and we're experimenting as we go. Um, as you're aware, space is a huge problem for supporting a library of things. So I don't know that necessarily we've singled them out, but it is something that's on our peripheral agenda. Um, and we keep re- Um, and we keep recycling back to it and how to focus on that going forward. Uh, but we have snowshoes, hotspots, blood pressure monitors, museum passes, um. I think that's all right now, unless you count the seed library, but you don't technically check those out.
Museum passes are paid for by the friends in the library.
Right.
Except for the clerk, always have to give them credit.
I I think there's an argument to be made for expanding that surface, um. And we're kind of looking at that, some libraries have a lot of stuff, I mean, wow, um. But um, I guess we're moving slowly in that direction. We got the snowshoes last year, but wasn't any more snow.
Oh, well, there's this year.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Um, a tangential question?
Yes.
I know programming is in circulation. It's different. I know this is, it is different. But when you're counting and looking at, especially for things like the annual report. And looking at numbers, and then we're looking at numbers. Is there a um? Defined methodology for accounting? You know, across programs internally and across the two. Branches, so we're all, everyone's doing it the same, standardized method?
Not that I'm aware of, you mean, does the state have us?
No, internally, do we, does Troy have at least a standardized, or is it, is there something that across? The programs? Count everybody?
Count everybody.
There we go.
The last report I have is from. You counted everybody, didn't you?
Instructors too, instead?
No.
Okay, I was just very curious about that, because I know some places might if count the instructor.
Well, it would depend, sometimes I would count myself if I was an active participant.
Okay.
That's another thing, we do um school visits, you know, and those statistics go into the report. And we count the whole class, you know, teacher's home.
Yes, it is. Fewer, Lancingburg is open fewer hours than me.
Mm-hmm.
But it always has, if you're looking at a comparative. They get shortchanged on that.
This, by the way, this report is generated by the automated system.
Right. That's what I'm saying, I know they're completely different, but I'm just curious, having looked at numbers. The system too, um, any, anything else on? The circulation number report? Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you.
Oh.
And I I know that the board has asked for this on a more regular basis, are we still interested in getting numbers on a regular basis?
I don't know if you want to present anything every time, I mean, I can include it in the dropbox every month. If, you know.
Every month?
Hmm.
Is the report generated every month?
Yeah.
So there would be no problem in in putting it in the dropbox?
Not at all.
But there's need to be on the agenda every month.
Does this work?
Yeah.
For quarterly, um, as on the agenda?
Okay, alright. Um, okay, our our next report will be from the safety committee, please?
Um, yeah, um. The safety committee is a staff committee, open to all staff members. And the safety committee meets um. Once every two weeks. I'd ask Virginia to um give us a great summary of what the safety committee has been working on. Because she's very close to it and keeps the notes and. Virginia?
Yes. So I wasn't asked to prepare to anything specifically, so I thought I would read you the mission statement that the safety committee established in June. Um, and then kind of give you a little rundown on what we've been doing. And then if you want to ask questions, myself, or there's other members of the safety committee on as well. Um, so the mission is to analyze and review current safety concerns of patrons and staff. And revise such policies so that all staff are aware of best practices and are appropriately trained on those methods. Additionally, we wish to put into place policies to help prevent incidents, provide care to staff after incidents occur. And put in place a plan to make staff feel supported and safe in their work environment. As well as a clear policy explaining banned patron practice, historical, current and future. So as Paul said, any current employee of TPL can join this committee. We do meet every two weeks, typically, we are skipping the next meeting because of Thanksgiving. Um, at each meeting, we designate one person to take notes and one person or more in charge of making required changes. Or moving forward to next steps. Um, notes are taken and shared with all committee members, meeting notes and all works in progress are uploaded to a shared Google Drive. That we all have access to. Um, any resolutions or recommendations made by the committee are shared with the department heads and posted on our internal wiki or staff hub. Um, the safety committee has charged herself with a few tasks ongoing and we add those as we continue our process. The first is, we will be responsible for maintaining the flashlights in the building and making sure that they're in working order. This is to be done twice a year when the time changes. Um, the safety committee will be responsible for making sure that the maps with locations of exits and fire extinguishers are updated annually or as needed. And the safety committee will view policies and procedures every two years to make needed changes. Um, before I tell you what we've been doing, I do want to say that none of the changes that we have done or implemented. Are formal because we have not finished our main task. Um, so the main task that we've taken on is revising completely the emergency policy. And in doing so, creating procedures that will be written um to be shared once approved. And we're also creating any peripheral documents along the way, such as the map reference. That would be a map of each location that shows where the fire extinguishers are. Um, we have also created um to be used in the future, once everything is finished. Um, scripts to be read for programming that regard um the code of conduct. And our emergency policy regarding uh evacuations, if there's an emergency during an event. To date, since June, we have been doing that, we have been actively working with revising existing. Emergency policies and creating procedures. Um, I say creating, but essentially we're formalizing existing procedures that are not been written down or updated. Um, some of you may not know, but sick away was listed on our policies, that's the last time that any changes had been made. Um, and that branch, I believe, closed in twenty, was it two thousand nine, two thousand eight, something like that? Um, and none of the procedures were formalized and written down in any space that we knew. So we have gone through nearly all of the existing policies. Created a outline of what we think was missing and that now we have begun. Um, to start taking on creating those missing policies such as active shooter. Um, policies, digital disaster response, um, employee-directed violence, patrons and domestic disputes. So things that have evolved over time that are not in the existing policy. Or that we felt needed to be addressed directly because of either the volume, uh, quantity or severity of the um. Incidents or interactions with patrons. We've also charged ourselves with creating formal procedures for incident documentation. And creating eventually, once we're done with all of that, an implementation and review procedure as well. Um, which would include regular in-services and training on these procedures. We understand that once we are done with this large undertaking, that our intent is to give these policies and procedures. The department heads to review, once they've had a chance to do that and give it back to us with any recommendations, questions, et cetera. We would then make a recommendation for Paul to present it to the board for approval. Doing that same process, giving a chance to ask questions, revise that, et cetera, um. That's a lot, and we are working diligently on it. I do not have an estimate of when we would complete this as we are painstakingly creating a lot of this. From nothing, um, but I would anticipate that it's taken us since June to get thus far. So we're looking at several more months minimum. Before we would be able to feel like we could present it to department heads, um. So I I guess before I, if you, I ask if you have questions, um, we have several committee members also on. Uh, I would invite them to contribute to. What our purpose is if they want to at this time. Having none, I guess I would say to the board, um, do you have questions? Is there anything specific you would like me to explain?
Why, why you chose choosing to go bulk versus as each numbered piece is done? Move that through the process to the department heads and the director and then to us for approval.
I will tell you that we discussed that, and the reason is because as we move on to another section. We found that we had to go back and revise that or add something that we overlooked while we're creating these new sections.
I am concerned about that because. I think we're gonna end up with too big a sandwich to eat. We might eat smaller bites.
I understand the concern, um, however, if we did that, we would be asking you to revise the same thing. While we're still editing it. So if we finish the first section and gave it to you, and once we moved on to the second section and realized that we needed to flush it out. Or change language or add something, it would just get tied up and every month you're looking at a different version of it. Um, and collectively, it just didn't make sense to do that because we are creating these things. Um, essentially from scratch, as I said, so. Um, I I can raise it to the committee again with our next meeting, however, we did discuss it already.
Would be the first time we dealt with a rather large policy. Reading.
Yeah, I I think it'd be good to think, see a coordinated set of thoughts. Um, at least in outline, I don't know, we need to get down to the granular level, in fact, I'm not even sure we need to review it on a granular level. But I think that seeing a comprehensive set of thoughts organized and. Brought us for. Overall opinions, but I think it's pretty valuable, but.
But it may be available to the board to look at piece by piece, once, once it's finished.
I think in terms of a stack of SOGs where not everything relates to everything else. And that as you finish a section, I don't think we should be holding up, but what do we do when the heat goes out? Or what do we do for domestic violence? We we need to buy smaller pieces there.
I, I'm sorry.
End of things, may I suggest that the board members speak more loudly? It's very difficult when you're on the other end of things to hear what you all are saying. Um, it's difficult to hear when I'm sitting here. Um, so I I just want to make a suggestion to all of you, because I've been where uh Virginia is. And it's really hard to hear.
Thank you, Freda, I actually did not hear the last thing, I believe Keith said.
Let me repeat.
Yes, so I think that we shouldn't be waiting months for. To look at what do we do when the heat goes out, just because we had, hadn't, you have not written a section yet on domestic violence. That, that's what I'm looking for, is to get like items. Rather than wait till this thing has a bow on it, it, I think we, I think we might do better if it's ongoing as. Rather than cut A to Z.
I understand, however, there is an existing policy, that policy is being followed.
That's the one we're revising. We're not reinventing the wheel or anything.
Right, we have revised the existing policy, but we are not anywhere near at a level to present it. I know what you're saying and I don't discredit it, but there is an existing policy that is being followed. And if you're only updating portions of the policy, you're going to add to confusion. And if you you have revisions, you're gonna tell staff to do it one way and then change it a month later. And you're gonna add to co- confusion, uh, lack of cohesiveness when addressing situations. You're going to increase the risk of safety concerns because everybody's gonna be uncertain of which version that they're following.
It's not been my experience with with a book of standard operating guidelines. That address different situations. Maybe it's our existing policy wasn't written with that in mind, and that that might be part of the confusion or disagreement here.
Oh, I don't, I don't think it's a disagreement, I will take your suggestions to the safety committee. Um, but we don't have completed documents to give you. We're working on sections that require them to be balanced on other ones. So even the heating policy, which we did not change, the snowstorm policy, we didn't change. We just wrote down all the details um that were missing from there. So we can still operate on the existing policy while these things are being addressed.
You want, are you asking about like maybe seeing red lines or something, just like?
I mean, we have an outline that I, we can share, but. I mean, I I'm, I'm even willing to share the draft that we're working on, but I don't want it to add to confusion. With different versions because we're drafting and editing as we go.
I will bring you a binder that of what I'm talking about and what most familiar with. This, and we can deal with this offline.
I appreciate that, yeah, go ahead, I mean, we're open to suggestions and we can talk about things. Um, and you know, if you have an example of what you're um asking for, I'd love to see it. And I'm sure other members of the committee would as well.
I have a question, Virginia, this is Dan, thank you so much for giving an update on the present, on what you've been working on and I appreciate it. And also you answering my question since I'm new to this position. Um, I had a question about the maps of the fire exits or fire extinguishers and where. What is it currently and what needs to happen in order to be updated?
Sure, the the current one is there's nothing.
Okay, is that legal?
Yeah, doesn't that put us in violation of like fire code?
I honestly don't know, I am not versed in those things.
Yeah, exits have to be mapped, I don't believe your extinguishers do.
Okay.
So are the exits mapped?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a map of the main library, not the Lancingburg library. Um, that is also, see, and that's another thing that's being drafted, we're working on that. The problem is, is that we started that and realized that there were other extinguishers that we weren't sure where the location was. Um, and because of the pandemic, almost all of the extinguishers were expired, they had not been inspected. Um, so we, that has been corrected, and then we found a couple more that we didn't realize were there. So we just decided to start over with that again because it became too cumbersome. So we, that's why we've charged ourselves with creating this map and documenting everything so that it can be used. Not only for the um employees, if there's a need, or the public if there's a need. But also so that we can ensure that the inspections are up to date going forward.
Okay, I'm sorry, just to confirm, you say there is not a map of the fire exits at Lancingburg, or there is?
As far as I know, there's no existing map at Lancingburg of any kind.
Okay, so isn't that a legal issue then? That's outside of the extinguishers, that's just the exits?
Again, I don't know what the codes are.
But we will be working on that.
Yeah, but my, my curiosity is if if this, if. Yeah, but my, my curiosity is if, if this, if you've been working on this since June and you already project several more months. That this would be pushed and not a priority. I'm just thinking about.
Has the building passed the fire inspector inspection within the past year?
Well, the maps will be available as soon as we get them done.
If it's passed inspection, then it's not nation.
Okay.
We do, by the way, so.
Right, I'm not aware of any outstanding violations in any way.
Yeah.
Does it, does it increase our liability though? As a library, if there was a fire.
Should ask an insurance agent for that. Right, that, that's, that's not something that we can answer, right? I think we'd have to ask the insurance agent that, that's.
We get inspected by them too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm happy to answer anything else.
Virginia, how many people actually are on the committee and like, are they representing all the different departments or?
Yeah, so. They do, and yes, so we have eight members. I would say we usually have three to five members at every meeting. We have one, two, three, four. Yes, so Lansenberg is represented and all the main service, uh, departments are represented at the main library. Um, with, uh, department heads, librarians, library associate, library assistant and director.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if, if the board member wanted to become a member, they could?
I am unaware of that. It's an internal committee that would defer to Paul for that answer.
Yes, we, I, when we originally designed it, I designed it as a staff committee.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Are you on that as well? Are you on that or are you overseer? Are you on that?
Um, if the safety committee. Needs biweekly, um, US means every two weeks.
I'm sorry?
The safety committee needs every two weeks.
Typically, yeah, typically.
So there's like, should be regular output from that. Um, is that something that we want brought up at every board meeting?
I don't imagine we would want that, but. Basically, we're trying to, um, complete, um, for example, a disaster policy. So that the board can review that and approve it. Most of that is, uh, you know. It, it, it's in the works, um, it's not done, it's partial.
I feel like with the public comment that came from Chloe and Will and the letter that we got, that the safety is clearly a top priority here. So I think, I'm not sure when we're gonna be discussing that during this meeting, but. I actually agree, and I think maybe, not to give you more work, Virginia, but. I think it should be something we should be discussing over the next couple of months and.
I see no reason from my perspective, I mean, it's not any more work for me. We're already doing the work.
Thank you. I mean, just talking for us. Yeah, I think the safety is a huge priority. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to discuss this.
That's why we have a committee.
However, we are, two people have already resigned in this last month and I'm sure others might be on their way out. Because they don't feel that this is a safe place to work, so I don't think that some, the safety committee is working very diligently and hard. But if it's gonna take months for them to complete this, you're gonna lose more staff members.
I think having the board be updated on this progress we're making would be valuable.
Um, um, can I just ask a question? The policies and procedures that we're revising. We're flushing out the details, so my question is, may I ask the board what your expectation? Of the safety committee is? So that we can directly address those? Like not specific items, but what, what is it that you want us to accomplish? With our time?
May I make a first comment on that? Uh, I guess I would, from speaking for myself, this is not without consultation with any of the rest of the board. Uh, we've heard that safety is a serious concern amongst staff. We've also heard that the safety committee is working to revise or update the safety manual or safety policies. So we just wanna know what the updates are and how that's going.
At a high level.
At a high level, yes, not at a granular level, speaking for myself, I, I, I concur there. And so we just wanna be apprised what is, how things are going to address the concerns that have been raised by staff.
Okay, um, and Paul, I didn't ask you this before, so please object if you feel it's. Too much, but I mean, I'm, there's no reason for us not to share the drafts that we're working on with you guys. I just don't want them to be formalized until we've had a chance to complete them. Um, unless, again, I'm gonna bring this to the safety committee.
Pretty gritty work at this point and, uh, yeah, I mean, if the board really wants to review that, there's no reason not to.
Is it just, we don't need to review it during our regular meetings? Is that something that could just be put in a folder in Dropbox?
Yes, my intention was.
Progress reports in the, in the Dropbox.
For anybody who wants to review the granularity of it.
Yeah.
But I do agree that a high level report of progress.
Yeah.
Generally, what the committee had looked at that month would be.
Yeah, basically, uh, just kind of an update on what we're doing.
And, and just on to Zan's point, so is our response to? The concerns that were raised here today is that? What is our response? Is our response that we're gonna have the safety committee look at it? Is our response that we're gonna oversee the sa- I mean, we, we have to have a response. You know, I think we can't just. That's okay, no, I, I mean, it's, it's not like we can end this meeting and say, well, thank you for telling us that and. You know, where, where are we going?
Just to add to that, I think we need something concrete that we can walk away with and that we can tell the staff because. This is a public library and the staff do not feel safe at either location and I think. That's a huge cause of concern and if you're okay with just losing staff, but like they're dropping like flies, then I, there's nothing else I can say. But I find it really alarming, a lack of.
And I, I would add on to your comments to also say that we've been notified by staff that there are concerns and. They're waiting for a response from us, so I think we as a board need to make a response of some kind. I think we might do better to address that in new business right now.
But in, I, I was, I was anticipating you might.
As well as figure out how long we have tonight to do this.
Stay all night, take care of this. I don't know where it really fits, but this is a huge concern.
And, and as well, and I know we brought this up in the past, are we doing exit interviews when people are leaving?
What's that?
Are we doing exit interviews when people are leaving?
Yeah.
So that we have it written down that people are leaving because.
That's actually, uh, an agenda item that's going to admin.
Okay.
Is to work on institutionalizing.
Because I mean, that is something. A board before, is that these need to be being done?
That will be institutionalized at, at the admin level and. Brought to the director so we can start document, know what the documentation is to.
I guess in addition and part of this is, um, I have spoken recently with, um. With, um, Andrea from Albany and, um. We had introduced this safety idea at a director's meeting a couple of months ago, four or five months ago, actually. And the only libraries that really had interest in this is us and Albany. Because we're the large urban libraries in our area. And so in discussing this with Albany, it turns out that they're pretty much in a similar situation. Uh, they do have staff leaving over the same issue. But they have, um, ideas in their approach and we have ideas in our approach and there's things that we can share. So we talked about holding a meeting here between Andrea and myself. And inviting any board members who want to attend. And you can get a picture of. At least what Albany is facing and it's pretty similar to what we're facing.
I was, I was on that communication. I was actually gonna ask you, um, have you set up that meeting yet?
Not yet, but I can.
And, and just so people who are listening know, um, it was a board member who initiated that conversation with APL. Um, uh, one of us actually spoke to one of their board members and one of us spoke to their director. Or to their. Quarter and got the, a director's response and it's going through Paul, so it's not as if the board is not actively involved. Um, the board is also going to be approaching. Schenectady. And if we've already had this as a discussion, that's connecting public libraries, a place also to get some feedback from, on security and safety. Because, and I wanna say this as carefully as I personally can, is that disaster reactions are important, but. It doesn't always. Just a definition of disaster versus safety, there are, are differences in the definitions of the two. And how people are reacting to what, how they feel safe here. Um, versus reacting to. A disaster, I can't, I'm trying to think of a better word so I don't keep repeating it, but sometimes there is one. So I think, Virginia, in, in, in your ask, um, at, at times, I'm, I personally am not sure how that's all gonna fit in the long run. And maybe that's part of why I'd like to know how things are, are evolving at the safety committee. Because again, it isn't just a disaster committee, it's a safety committee.
Right, um, may I ask?
Please.
Right, everything we have is in a Google Drive and I can just add your emails as access. So you can view what we're doing, including our meeting notes. I mean, we, we can be completely transparent. You can go back to the first meeting and follow forward if you like with the draft changes and edits. Um, I just need to know if that level of access is what you are asking for and how best you would like me to give it to you.
The Google Drive seemed to be, at least for now. Um, I think there's two parts of that, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, is for some of the, um, actual doc- documents. And the work, work product is putting it in a Google Drive so people can review it at their. Convenience in a sense, um, but then do a monthly blurb report. You know, of the, you know, the high points. Does that sound acceptable?
To me, sure.
And here too?
And I'm, it's just, just the presence of draft documents doesn't mean necessarily that the board is going to be editing them. Clarification, review.
But just being, just being kept aware because half of our decision making is based on knowing sometimes how it evolved. And what's been rejected, what's been accepted and, and the progress of that discussion.
Track changes on.
We just look, we're just looking. Alright, so I think we've all agreed on the how to? Okay. Thank you very much, Virginia, and if. I'll actually, what? Yes, you have a more question?
I mean, yeah, I guess it's hard for me to, so my, I work with journalists providing safety training, that's my job. So I get very heated in these discussions and I was surprised coming into the public library world and finding out that. The staff here feels this unsafe, so obviously this hits close to home, so I guess, um. Yeah, I just wanted, I don't know if there's anything else we could discuss about what was talked about in the letter itself, because some of the staff had said. That they were violating procedure by coming to us and, and not being addressed, their concerns were not being addressed. So I guess are the only options right now is to meet with APL who don't also have a safety procedure in mind.
And I think they do, we're just looking at some ideas. And the safety was connected it. For that piece, I think it was asked if we put that in new business. Oh, we're not even near new business yet.
Great.
We're on number three.
The safety committee was set up as a staff committee, open to every staff member. With the idea of increasing communication, with the idea of being that, you're there, what they're thinking, what their ideas would be. Not everybody participates in that.
I don't know if this is something correct time to ask this question, but in the letter, I. I don't know if this is right. They address the security guard, which I believe this, the safety committee had addressed the security guard and had recommended. Not to have a security guard.
That is correct.
Recommended, um, it, it was a discussion of staffing levels. And, um, they didn't recommend a security guard, but they did recommend additional staff. Um, that would be, um, eyes and ears, so to speak. And I did present that to the board.
Right, and did we have our? Are we, are we planning on hiring? So you would need to actually hire another person, is it?
It was a budget issue that came up.
You know, it was not approved and it's not in the twenty twenty four budget.
The security guard, but new staff. But reference did increase our staff though, right, from four to five?
Yes. We traditionally had four in reference, now we have five.
Okay.
But anyway, that was where that was left. I think, you know, the security guard question is still something that, uh, you can discuss. Um, and it would be good, probably interesting to discuss with Albany and their experience. They had some similar experiences that we had, um. They do have security guards, um. But that, as Andrea pointed out, doesn't solve all their problems. I mean, people are looking for a solution to all this. And so far, we don't have the single solution for it, but there are smaller things. That we can do going forward that have been, uh, successful here and successful in Albany. And, you know, we can put these in, and communication is, is part of what we're doing in the safety committee so that. When we do get policies and procedures worked out, you know, it's easier to communicate all of that to everybody at once. And everybody being on the same page, so that's another goal that we have.
If I may, I think with the security guard, you're saying solving all of the problems. I don't think we're assuming one thing is gonna solve all of the problems, so. But to not do those things.
No, but I, I presented the security guard issue. We did go over it here in the board.
When, when was that?
Last April, while we were working on our budget, it was brought up as something, do we put it in the budget or not? And it would have been at AK and what I do, I'll, I'll put it this way. For my personal remembering and my personal interpretation was that it was not being advocated strongly. Even by staff as something because there are still issues with having a security guard. And the kind of interactions a security guard might have with the public, sometimes with staff. But mostly with the public and with situations, whether that they, um, exacerbate a bad situation or make it better. So it was not something, again, I'll use that word again, advocated strongly at all for us to do that.
To give you some context, we did try security guards at one point. There were security guards in the building. And I think the decision by this committee was made based on their experiences with those security guards.
So did you talk directly with the staff about that?
Wait in on that comment.
In April, so I recently spoke with the staff and they were saying that this, it was a different security guard every time. So there, there was no consistency and there was no. What they. Yeah, there's no familiar, yeah, so. Um, but clearly they're advocating for one now. I think they just want a different situation and or.
Yes, I think you, there's two people who would be. Um, this is not something that the whole staff is completely sold on. I mean, that's a wrong impression.
They signed, sixteen people signed the, the letter.
They signed, they didn't know what they were signing.
May I move that we table this discussion and put it under new business? Let's see if we can't get through the, the director's report. I hope that we can make that. And apologies, I'm gonna start sounding like. I hope we can.
I hope we can keep that conversation, that report short, and we, it's, it's an important discussion, I think we want to have that discussion fully and completely. Uh, but we've danced around it for quite a while, let's see if we can get to it.
It's not the quiet, it's just wet.
No.
Okay, thanks. All right, yes. Well, you're on now. Director's in quick.
Oh, well, um, the construction project coming up has been bid, um, we've been accepted a bid from AJS Masonry of, uh, two hundred and forty-three thousand. The grant that we have, um, for that project, we have a total of, uh, hundred and seventy and hundred and seventy-four thousand roughly. Um, and so there is some, some difference, we had estimated the, we used the estimate of, uh, two hundred and thirty-four thousand for that project. Um, but that, again, was a couple of years ago, so prices have gone up since then. Um, we probably won't start that project till the spring, and I, I gave you a complete, um, description of what the project is, um, it will involve taking apart that one section of the parapet walls and, um, reassembling them, and also repairing the, um, uh, portion of the, um, quarter. Thank you. That, um, was taken off the building, uh, at least in two different operations, one of the large pieces was taken on. We had to take off a smaller piece, uh, last year. Um, the smaller piece we can't reuse, the larger piece we may be able to reuse. Um, so that's basically coming up now, uh, we have a project behind that, and that's refinishing the roof, uh, replacing the EPM roof. Um, but we're kind of need to hold off on that because of the disturbance of the parapet. Uh, roofing goes up the side of the parapet. And we can't really do those two projects at the same time. So we'll still able to do that. Um, in staffing, um, um, Samantha Christian Trippi has, uh, left their position here in the Adult Services Department for a position at the Gilderland Library. Um, Shubham Miss, Sam worked for us in the Circulation Department for at least a year. Um,
And and, and Paul?
What's that?
Since this isn't a separate agenda item, we're going to, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we acknowledge the resignation, we need to ex we accept the, um, hiring of individuals, but we acknowledge the resignation of individuals, it is part of that fiduciary responsibility, Jeff and Board knows that there are changes to our budget. So I'll make the motion that we acknowledge the, um, resignation and say goodbye to, um, to them. Um, do I have a second?
Yes.
I was gonna, may I ask, what do we also add in the second resignation of Will? I know that was.
She has not, that is an honorary. So we will do that probably next month, and have acknowledged it. Um, but thank you for the question, any other questions or anything else? Can we have a second? Um, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
And, um, we've had questions about our incident reports, so I just did a little bit of an analysis here. Um, the, um, library, um, has for many years, uh, uh, relied on our incident reports to keep track of what's going on. Um, there are, uh, different reasons for incident reports. Um, some of them are related to health and accident situations, others are related to patron behavior. Um, all of the accident reports go directly to our insurance carrier. Um, so far this year, we've had fifty-one incident reports on file, uh, sixteen of those, uh, involve health and, um, accident-related, uh, events. Thirty-five of them involve patron behavior. Um, of these, staff had to call nine-one-one, uh, three times for health-related, uh, incidents, and that's the ambulance. And nine times for behavior-related incidents, and that's the, goes to the police department. Um, we also are developing and have developed a follow-up form for those incident reports. Um,
What's the follow-up form entail?
What's that?
What does the follow-up form entail?
Basically to say, here's what we did, is that a good thing, is that work, did that, you know, not work? What went wrong? You know, that kind of thing. So it's a review of our response to, you know, an incident. They, they do vary in terms of, I guess, um, potential for, for, uh, you know, violence, I guess you could say. Um, all the way from the, uh, incident that happened in April, which is one of our, well, it is our worst. Um, down to relatively minor patrons being too loud, uh, being fairly obnoxious. But something that we can normally handle on the normal course of business, but again, all of those are, are reported.
Are the incident reports digital? Or hard copies?
No, they're hard copy. Um, matter of fact, we are in the process of changing over to a digital copy, but I, I still want to retain a hard copy.
When will they start moving to digital?
What's that?
When will they start moving to the digital form?
As soon as we get a better form. We had a form, but it, we had a form, but it didn't work well. Albany has a form, we might steal theirs.
So who does that? You, you do that, or is that a committee?
The staff member involved would fill out the incident report.
I just mean getting to the digital form.
They would, oh, who was?
Just getting the process of getting the actual form, like having that part of the procedure, is that something you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an administrative task between Joy and myself.
What's the process for submitting an incident report?
The incident happens.
So what, yeah, incident happens.
They write it up and give it to me.
Okay, so it's direct through you, they don't go through their recording structure?
Goes directly to me.
Okay. Um, and for the follow-up form, is that you again, or does that?
Generally, that's something that, uh, works out with the department head.
Okay.
You know, this department head is either there or close by, usually.
Sorry, this was a follow-up, what do you do with the report once it's given to you?
The incident report, correct? I read it. Um, if it's, uh, an accident, I send it to the insurance carrier. Um, generally, it doesn't need further, um, anything further other than to be filed. Um, yeah.
Do you also review the follow-up report that comes out as well?
No, I haven't, but, uh, generally, that's supposed to be something between the department head and the staff member, but.
If there was a concern with how the response was executed, would that come back to you through, through the department?
It could, yeah.
It rose to that level, okay, so you do get feedback on this, what I'm trying to gather?
Yeah, I mean, we're small enough, I get feedback anyway.
Just curious, just wanted to confirm that.
Right.
I'm sorry, can I, um, add to that?
Please.
Um, Paul, Paul gave you the very simplified version of what happens, and that is the formal existing policy. But we also, after a report is filed, they, a copy is left at each corresponding department's security log, and their department heads review that, or we attach photos, we pull video if we need to. Um, we might send out emails to other department heads or follow-up, and then the after-incident review, um, to date, was done informally, but I have started doing it formally. Um, and then we, you know, talk about incidents as they occur, we check in with employees if they were involved in it afterwards. Um, what worked, what didn't, exactly as Paul described it, but any concerns are brought forward to the department head meetings as well. Um, so if there's any negative feedback or positive, um, it does go to the department head meetings as well.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, pointing out that there is a kind of a another layer, um, each department does keep, uh, a, a notebook and a record that everybody reads every day.
Right, so the Safety Committee pre-pandemic, and I can't honestly tell you how many years ago, maybe twenty two thousand seven, two thousand nine, something in that era, we created, um, some of the existing policy procedures, and the, we have a security log at each service desk. So there may have been fifty-one incidents, but not everything that occurs elevates to an incident, so we use our security logs to track um, behaviors, trends, problematic patrons, um, concerns, like, you know, somebody was sleeping on the ferry street door. So that's not an incident report per se, but it alerts the, uh, the rest of the people in the department of what's going on, so that they know what to look out for, and also that helps us develop trends. So if we notice that somebody's on this ferry street door, sleeping every Monday, potentially they're there from Saturday to Monday, so somebody coming in Monday might be aware, or, um, you know, if we need to call police or anything from that, it's just a, a way to alert other people what's going on, even if it doesn't elevate to an incident report.
But I, this is Carol Roberts, head of Young People Services, could I just add that, um, Virginia has a log at the Circulation Desk that's a general log? And anytime I write an incident report, or I think any staff really, um, we leave it there to make sure um, that everybody knows about it, and you'll, you know, if you were to look at it, you'd see an asterisk or something underline or in all caps, so we try to make sure that everybody's, um, aware of what's going on.
In addition, we have, um, thirteen cameras around the building, and we have, we're able to record, you know, what happened, uh, and who was involved. And some of times that, um, uh, is attached to the, uh, incident report as well.
Are there cameras outside?
I'm sorry?
Are there cameras outside?
No.
Is that something that has ever been talked about?
Yes, been talked about, and also we have, uh, an estimate for how much. But the problem is that, uh, one of the problems is they're I don't know, they don't want to put them on the historic building. So they have to find different places, and the places they found don't give us a good picture of what we need. Um, the debate is not over yet on that, but, uh, it's fairly expensive to put in those cameras, so it's kind of one of the things that, uh, holding me up.
My bicycle was swiped outside this window less than a year ago.
The camera would have been good, perhaps.
Nobody on this end of the street handled it.
Yeah. Sorry.
Virginia, um, just to kind of take it back to the Safety Committee for one second.
Yes.
Is part of the Safety Committees, like the purview of updating the guidelines that, um, you so very thoroughly, um, laid out for us, um, does that include defining, um, since you have the security log, do you, are you planning, or is there currently a guideline that defines what level of incident, um, warrants of incident report, and what is not just logged in, um, the safety notebook?
Yes, so there's nothing formal that's part of what we need to create, everything that is done now, what is being done by training, direct training. Um, and when in doubt, always fill an incident report out. Um, so essentially, it's training right now, but it is part of the outline, when you see that for the Safety Committee, part of our outline is to formalize incident documentation and levels like that.
Yeah, I will say that, you know, I got fifty-one incident reports for this year, not all of them, I mean, some of them are hardly anything happened, okay, I mean, because we have asked people to do that very thing, if you don't, if you're in doubt, make an incident report. And that's what that's where we are at this point, I think.
Like I said, that does, yes, that, what, what kind of severity are we talking about with occurrences? True, it, you know, things that make it as an incident report. And in a sense, you know, what percentage are causing enough people to feel unsafe?
Yeah, um, mostly, I ask the question mostly because I'm worried about that different individuals who work at the library may view certain situations differently, so there's no necessarily guideline to define.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard because, you know, people react.
Over reporting, I'm just.
Alex, I'm sorry, um, so, uh, essentially, anytime there is a direct injury, whether it's somebody falling down the stairs, physical contact from one patron to another with an employee, um, anytime you need to call for emergency services, anytime that something violates, um, your personal sense of safety, so a security log entry, maybe there were three bicycles blocking the ramp, and, you know, kids had to be called downstairs to move them, whereas an incident report would be, I asked these three kids to move their bikes, and they started cursing at me and calling me names, and I, you know, they did leave, but they were calling me names and things like that, so, um, it, it really varies, and that is why we have tasked ourselves with formalizing it and, and not just verbal training with staff.
Thank you, Virginia.
You're welcome.
Your, 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 your report is just done?
What's that?
You are done with?
Yeah.
All this goes, we can segue right then and no, this is the end.
Do we have any more business?
Yes. Um, I have whether materials being online has been resolved yet?
What, sorry, what's the nature of this?
Um, there we haven't resolved what needs to be online in terms of materials, like
The packet materials that we reviewed.
Try to receive tonight as a member of the public.
Oh, four materials, you're saying?
Yes.
Gotcha, I thought you were talking about library material.
No, sorry.
Oh, goodness.
I restructured the question, I revised the question, I submitted it again, a- as of this afternoon, I still have gotten an answer, so and I haven't gone on an email to see. And I was very, 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 very specific throughout everything that's in the packet, I kind of expanded everything.
And the other question is whether you ever found, uh, my input on the evaluation of the director?
No, I did not, and I'm not going to pursue it any further, because every way I charted out, the juice isn't worth the squeeze.
Okay, but that leads to the, you know, how credible the, the evaluation uh, instrument is, that if things get excluded, it's, it's.
Can I also ask for some clarifying background on this?
Yeah. There, um.
Is this something that needs to be on executive session?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's just.
I thought Alex and I had an email, so we're just.
We have, we are tasked, the family committee is tasked to do, well, do an evaluation of the executive director every year. We have an instrument that we've been, had refined over a couple of years to it has been u- used electronically as opposed to just everybody. As opposed to just everybody writing and trampling it out here, because the electronic does give more people some percentage breakdowns. She believes she made a comment that we did, did not reflect in the e- electronic version as displayed.
And the numbers are strange, then.
What's on the?
Um.
There were a couple that added up to more than the number of board members, I thought.
Less, right, or.
I thought it was less.
There were some that are less, yes.
Or less, and that's why I had expressed concern. Um, and I have no way of knowing, you know, it's anonymous, so you don't know uh who's, who's been his response.
You don't know if somebody skips a question either.
Yeah.
Which is, is your right to do as a board member.
The less is easy to explain, the more is.
I don't think so much.
I thought it was more.
I don't think so. Well, I would have, I would have gotten a, a very concerned if there had been more.
No, there was, there was, yeah.
I wouldn't bet a big pile of money on it, I, I'll put a dollar up, but that, that's as far as I would go. I, I could be wrong, I, I've been wrong before. I thought there was one that had.
And everybody does get to, the admin is the group that works on the questions and does the instrument. Everybody in the board gets to review and comment on the instrument, and then everybody gets a chance to actually use the instrument, it's.
Other than the questions and how that feedback is, is shared out, that was another discussion we could have, but.
Yeah.
Then we got another piece that we need.
After that, everyone's using, there is a meeting, this year there was a meeting amongst the board management, there's a review with the director. And that is done in executive session.
And it has, at his request, with everybody on the board, not just committee.
Any old, another old business?
It's a, it's a holiday party over there. Because we were already invited, right?
You're already invited, it, it's in the middle, how's that? Yes, so December eighth, everyone got an invitation to the holiday party, uh please let Virginia.
Well, that's not, no, my, my, well, my, my whole business, that's the whole business then? So the board is responsible for providing a raffle basket for volunteer. But the board is responsible. Right, or we have, we have.
We have said that there would be a board basket, not everybody has to participate, I'll say.
Which I will say. But, so I am in charge of doing the basket. If you would like to, there's no pressure to. Um, the theme is board games, so you can either give me a donation of money, you can buy a board game. You can ignore the whole thing, but if uh, if the party is on December eighth, December eighth, oh, then yes, so I guess by December second, is that a, well, that's a Saturday is the third, by December fourth, if I could. I have already started getting some board games, most of them are literary.
The, do you want, at some point, what else do you already have?
If you intend to go to the uh party, there is a deadline for giving Virginia your check.
It's all in.
They, they got it all. So yeah, so you have to respond by the fourth and in both instances, I think it's easy to remember. And you can bring your donation here when I get it though. But you can send one.
Thank you.
We're James from the board.
We just Marcus Ford, when you're in, Shakota Board.
Alright, now we're just.
Lighten up a little bit.
Any other? Alright, new business?
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm gonna start, I wanted to start with a letter and um this question about that all of these staff members signed the letter, but Paulier is suggesting that people signed it without reading it, and I ask, why? You're asking that, or suggesting that?
No, I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay.
It, it, it could be misunderstanding, did you, do you feel that they signed it?
Yes. I talked to a number of people who signed that letter, and that was, that's, that does not seem to be the case.
Excuse me if I may.
Hello?
Yes, uh, this is Henry, um, I work behind the circ desk. Uh, I would definitely like to um refute that claim that um no one read it. Um, I read it thoroughly and I will say there's even a lot, there's uh aspects of the letter that I personally disagree with, but I thought I would add my signature because I felt it was important for the safety and health of the staff. Um, I want to say that it was a topic of significant discussion for the week that it was being passed around. And the idea that um no one read it is uh just simply incorrect.
I'm sorry, oh, I thought you were gonna find that we had not read it, we, we have read it. Uh, so th- thank you for clarifying that you as staff had read the letter and uh before signing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
I I don't know how to talk about this in open session, I, I, I think that at some point, we need to talk about this in an executive session.
I can leave it.
We're still on, online, but.
There are a couple things we can say in open session. One is.
Oh wow. Can I say something? Are you speaking? Uh, this is Will, can I say something quickly? Um, I was just gonna say that generally I thought executive session is supposed to be to discuss personnel matters and also to discuss issues of contracts like in, in bidding for construction. I don't know if safety matters ought be discussion executive session, but then again, um, that's up to you guys.
But you raise an excellent point, I think, but I, I, I think this, your le- the letter that we received covers both personnel and safety, and, and I think we take the concerns raised very seriously. And I'd like to have a fulsome discussion about the issue of how personnel and safety interface and how that might uh what our responses aboard might be in exploring this process further. So I, I, I think the safety portion is extremely important and we do think, I think it's very important to have a conversation about it. Certainly we can have that conversation in public, but I think the personnel pieces need to be I would like to see that handled uh in executive session.
I, I think they are very, there are two very separate issues. And I don't think, I think that was the whole point, we're not going into executive session. We're not, because we're still discussing safety issue part, and we're not talking about the personnel piece now. And I think we're all gonna be very cognizant of that as we talk. But thank you, Will. So back to safety.
What I'd like to address, the, some of the I believe you seized on turnover issues. I think you may be misinterpreting that, uh, I'll explain why. There was a lot of turnover and a lot of businesses and industries during COVID. This library, because it's traditionally been underfunded, is all, had a reputation as a place to get you start and move on where you can make more money or get out of an urban center. We have, as a board, since I've been on it, um, I'm coming into my third year or my first term. And we directed supervisor, we directed to a salary study. We raised wages, we raised, second year raising wage, we directed, we intended to do a salary study again in two thousand twenty four to stay competitive. We also, to stay competitive, got the library into the state retirement system, which should have been done prior to the news.
Sorry, Paul's going to start, I can't listen to you guys. This was like during the, the.
So it's been very minutes, at the time, the library comments were all about issues that are on your hotspots and how your services are no longer available, thank you.
So, a lot of our turnover may be tr- traced to financial issues, which we have been steadily addressing. There are other things we can do there without cost to the li- library that will be coming up in the next couple of months. We also, because of working conditions, addressed things with the building such as a proper HVAC system, that is a work in progress. That, so it there are multiple reasons for turnover. And a lot of them have been people reevaluating their lives, they're seeking better financial opportunities. And we have attempted to regress the financial opportunities as well as the physical atmosphere in the building, be it such things as HVAC or we were blessed with the assistance from the fr- better lighting.
May I, I, I agree with you that COVID made a huge financial change in everybody's uh worlds.
I agree, there's things I'm not gonna comment on that involve personnel in an open meeting.
Understood, okay, I, I guess I fully understand, I guess.
I'm not gonna get so much further.
Just addressing, how come he got to speak, but I don't get to speak, just addressing what you're saying. The, the turnover, I think I'm referring specifically to the resignation letter we just got speaking on safety, you know, it's a personal thing, I'm happy to shut my mouth, but I think I'm not speaking about turnover in terms of the long term, talking, talking about the most recent. So it's literally written in the resignation letter why they're leaving to safety, so that's what I'm discussing.
People, people will leave the job for, and multiplicity of reasons, but it's just a fact that the board has received imported letter, letters of resignation that specifically call out safety. So we can't just hand wave it away, because obviously, yes, we don't necessarily pay as much as Gilderlin.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not the point.
Now, it's, I haven't received those, the letters of resignation, you said.
That one today.
Yeah.
She spoke about it, Will spoke about it.
Yes, I, this is Will, um, I did cite that in my letter of resignation and for the record, Gilderlin is offering me less than Troy. Um, I'm actually taking a pay cut. Um, and I'm getting fewer vacation days. Um, and if you guys, if you guys would like to see my offer letter, I can definitely send that to you guys and I can send you guys my letter of resignation as well.
I guess since I'm new, I'm not sure what I'm allowed to say in terms of the personnel versus the executive.
Well, we're not talking about any individuals or any, you know, you know, global issues, yes.
Sure.
Broad issues, yes. But anybody's personal, say life and
Sure.
then it's all. Even if it includes commentary about, say, the director, which would be something that we would take up as a personnel issue. Um, in executive session, or at least at the admin committee level.
Okay.
And then bring it to the board.
May I bring up the letter that was discussed as a general whole?
I think the general was, I, I wanna, so I'll talk about the response too, so.
Yeah, okay, I just have one more comment on it, I guess bringing back up the security guard issue, just in terms of clearly it's been advocated again, so maybe it didn't work and.
Thank you.
My friend, thank you.
And I will say.
Thank you. This is a new tip. May you use it in good health.
Yeah, I guess, um, again, obviously I'm new, so I was in here in April and it's, I'm glad that it, you tried and it didn't work and, but however, and saying that staff were not looking for that again, but clearly in this letter it is brought up again, so I think it's worth revisiting.
So you're referring to the security guard?
Sorry?
You're referring to the security guard.
And clearly doing a different tactic, because what service was used and clearly wasn't working.
Yeah, you're not, and not bringing up just.
Yeah, originally when the board decided to put this in the budget, um some years ago, before we even hired anyone, the point was to have a staff member who could bond. But when the um announcement went out, the applicants were not acceptable at all. Uh, and it weren't very
Over that years.
Years ago. No, we, we did not try to get anyone again last April. We just discussed whether or not we would how we were going to deal with security and the security guard. There.
There's somebody in there?
Well.
Oh, there's somebody in there? Okay. You didn't realize somebody was in Paul's office? There's somebody in Paul's office?
No, no.
That's probably the last.
So she's coming.
Yeah, no, there's somebody in there telling me money, that's the, that's the noise.
Oh, that's what I was trying to say. They, they come in here to do that.
So it's because you, you didn't receive good applicants many years ago, it's not something you would reconsider again?
No, no, uh, but, but this could give you history.
Yeah, yeah.
The, to make it a staff member was not a viable did, was not as viable as we had hoped.
Okay.
Uh, few applicants and the applicants were unacceptable, so that's when the library, Paul, hired Securitas, um, a provider of security.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you got what you paid for. And that's when we, that's when we found well, the, other libraries have also used them, um, in different parts of it, so you know, you sort of they went through that whole process and it was a disaster, and then COVID hit. And then coming back, i- i- it didn't seem to be, as we came back slowly, security guard was still thought about but not as carefully discussed as it was last April, when we were again looking at the budget and deciding what goes in the budget and how we're gonna do with, deal with security. The security is still in the budget, but that could be covered by, say, cameras or other means. Um, it doesn't mean security guard per se, and again, I'm just trying to give you a, a feel of how we got where we are. Um, and some of the, some of the resistance to a security guard that we had heard last spring, and obviously this letter talks about a security guard, and there's not a resistance, but a request, which changes things.
Okay.
Um.
But we also covered the question more recently. Um, just in the budget debate.
Right, I said last April, we started talking about it and we.
Well, we went over all of the, you know, pluses and minuses and that.
Exactly.
Definitely.
There's no money in the budget currently.
Because again.
We, we offered to hire another staff person at the reference desk instead. Um. It, and uh, maybe I, I don't wanna be redundant, but I think we tried hiring somebody in-house. Didn't find very good applicants, we then tried hiring professionals. That's what they do, they're professionals, they're trained for this here. Um, and there, I think that one of the challenges we faced was a turnover, we didn't end up with the same person who we could then build up a relationship with and teach about the way we need security delivered here for our environment, that we, we'd get somebody one week, get somebody else, somebody else. It was always different, it was inconsistent and uh seemed to maybe.
Be less professional and very untrained. Well, just.
Well, you know, they're, they're providing security in many different venues and different, yeah, so it was, didn't seem like it was a good fit for us.
Well, also a civil service division, so.
It would be.
You know, for civil service.
Not Securitas, that was a contract.
Right.
But if for here, it would be a civil service.
There was conversation about what, how many new people to hire and whether those new people having more eyes on the ground might help to um alleviate some of the security concerns. And uh.
Well, that was one of the things that was brought up in the budget discussion. The main library is open sixty hours a week. Which hours are you gonna cover? And my point was, you need to cover all sixty hours. We used to have security people in the afternoon because we thought that there were more activities in the afternoon, the worst event that's happened, you know, in my career, happened at eleven o'clock in the morning. One of those sixty hours is not gonna be important, so encourage, to cover sixty hours at the main library, you're talking to people full time.
Well, I'm sorry, was it, was it in the letter that they were asking the security guard mainly for at, in the evening?
Nights.
At night, because of
And weekends.
Of the concerns of being alone and having no one upstairs and the issue, so is, does that wind up being sixty hours or sounds like it would be fewer than that?
Well, we, I, I, I don't recommend it, because I don't believe that, you know, I can predict when something's gonna happen.
Well, why don't we take a holistic approach, if we have, if we have two logs, we have the formal safety incidents, we have what I'm assuming is a notebook with everything, safety incident will not included in, and I imagine that's all timestamps, to some extent, right? We're not just writing down an incident happened at the date, we're recording like the time. And we have a log, it's like the people who are working there, right, at a bare minimum, am I assuming too much? And we have a blog that's like the people who are working there, right? A bare minimum. Am I assuming too much?
But if we have the time, then you can do a, an analysis of when you're gonna get more likely.
That's what I'm saying.
And it may not be the most perfect answer to the problem, but you know where to at least start directing that solution.
We can't predict things that are going to happen.
That's why you need sixty hours.
But is it solely, is the request solely based on when the incidents are occurring or when there's less senior staff around?
But it gets based on, there's less senior staff.
Situation.
If you're here by yourself, there's three people, maybe four people maybe in the whole building. I can understand why you would want a security guard here at that time.
Versus during the day when there's a lot more administrative people.
Doesn't mean that the incidents are more likely to occur at night. It just means that the people who are working during that time, which is really the biggest concern that they feel safe in the building, right?
I think that's.
Just regular people. You could add more just regular people.
Some change. And the 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 concept of eyes on the street is well developed. Like just having more people provide more of a presence provides a more secure atmosphere.
It's just that it's not necessarily in the budget right now.
I think I think we talked about whether hire create one more, one new position or whether it's brought, create two.
I did.
Question about budget.
One more position for the um adult services department um that you can hire. We talked about um hiring somebody, yeah, with eyes and ears and uh work. At some level, probably as a library assistant or library associate um. Uh so far, we haven't done that. Again, that's not in the budget either, but um you know, you guys, I suppose you can stretch the budget a bit.
Yeah, I guess forgive my ignorance, I'm still learning. Is there room to move parts of other parts of the budget to create something? Is that a possibility? Is there?
Well, it's fairly tight. I mean, it doesn't open itself to a lot of adding staff, but.
Drafted budget that just included that, just seeing what it looked like?
Yeah, I think I I think we looked at that last year. And the, the majority of the board, not all the board, the majority of the board felt that uh we could not afford to ask the voters to increase our budget by that much, is my recollection.
You look at, yeah, the practical aspect of it and we were at uh tax increase of over eight percent or close to nine percent. Idea would be another ten percent on top of that.
The only thing to think of is anyone you hire is even newer than the people we've got working today or yesterday. So they're gonna be, not have any experience dealing with this clientele either. Yeah. Because part of that letter was framed about not not having senior people, being being rounded people who are with not much experience. But we'd be adding another, not much experience first.
If we can discuss that as well, which I don't believe is personnel, because it was just in in the letter. Well, but also just the, there was note about Paul that you're every, the the afternoon, they can't seem to get in touch with you, the staff, when they're going through these incidences and wanting you to be here from nine to five.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I I'm concerned about.
Now you're putting, not learning your. But that's not just operations, that's more personnel piece. It's a person in the doing it. And I think that's something um that as a board, and again through admin, and then the board will have to, we will talk about. We're gonna have to put that, that's on your, your new agenda. Understand. Uh I know that it, the the idea of the response has been brought up. No.
Yes.
I I gotta say this, all right? And I I I'm not sure if I'm gonna say it very dramatically into the board here, remember to put that up. Every one of you got to see the letter.
Gone out yet, hasn't it?
No, because I just got another response this morning about. So sorry, but you know, just saying. That's why it's not going out.
I I would be upset if it had gone out. I I would like to have a discussion as a group before it goes out.
Yeah, I thought this should have been an agenda item.
Well, I I'm hoping that.
Personnel matter, but we have the executive session to contend with that.
And and I'm hoping that we're gonna do that.
Well, again, this is gonna go, we're gonna follow some process and it'll go through admin and then, you know, then we'll discuss to as a board. We we have to get some ideas of of how we're gonna deal with this and what we want and what we're gonna ask for too. And I know some of you are very, also very processing and committed, committee oriented in how we do it. But everybody did get a chance to read the letter and I had heard the word viol- we're not ever, the letter does not in any way imply that there was a violation. It's just we have to have a way of dealing with it and and some sort of process to do it. To to answer.
The letter took me by surprise.
Me too.
What do you say, the word, the letter from staff? The staff letter?
Because, you know, we had been hearing about the the safety com- committee and, you know, there the orientation not toward a security guard and, um yeah, I I and that's why I wanted to see it discussed um in particular because, because of that was something that I just was totally unaware of the unhappiness and concern that people had.
Uh I think if you spend some time here, you can hear certain concerns. And I think there's been concerns throughout the year. This is, this is not new.
Well, the fact that it's risen to the level that sixteen, eighteen staff members felt the need to write a letter to the board has raised that, that it's not, this is not just chit chat here and there, people during the day. This is, it's a concern that's been raised and I think we need to at least acknowledge it and we may not have an answer right away, but I think we need to have a fulsome discussion about how we acknowledge it. And I'd like to have a conversation about what's the timeline of that response? And what issues will we try to talk about in that response? And maybe it's a two-part response. Here's part A in the response, here's part B of the response, but I'd like to have that conversation.
Well, I'm sure there'll be more conversations, but in order to get to where that point is, and I think that letter was really clear about following a process that sets some timelines and could we talked about the fact that you taught, use the word systemic, I use endemic.
I did not use the word.
Oh, I use the word systemic.
I thought I just heard you say it's a systemic problem. Um that there, it is an endemic problem. It isn't about an incident. We we fully realize this, but we need to have some sort of uh vehicle to go through this and we need to start the process. And if we keep waiting until we have more meetings and more meetings, then they're never gonna get any kind of response. So by saying if you, if we follow that path, which I'm sure you read, I know because you responded, then we can get to that point. We're sure we can have an admin meeting.
So is your intention to have the conversation this evening as well?
It was not my intention to have this conversation.
Could I move that we go to executive session to have this conversation?
Uh really, some time constraints.
Well, it takes you session, I think we'd release you from those time constraints. I'm sorry?
But then we the library closes in September. And we have a way to get out if he's gone.
And lock it.
Well, this has been obviously a topic that people have been wanting to talk about all evening long. There was an agenda that was put forward. We have dutifully followed the agenda. We didn't ask to change the agenda to move this forward in the agenda. And I'd like the opportunity to talk about this. And I think I've heard other people say it, would like opportunity to talk about it. So I've put a motion up. I heard a second. I'd like to have a vote on it. And.
If we can't proceed this evening, should we have a special meeting of the board?
I would be okay with that. My fear is pushing it a whole month. To our staff in this month.
And I, part of me wishes you had stepped all those things instead of just saying, this is my response to the letter, knowing that we did wanna get it out and knowing that it was very clear in in the forward about how the letter was written and why the letter was written.
I I was clear about the letter. Uh it's the agenda piece that um.
And I I addressed that in the forward too.
I've raised the, I think several people have raised this as concern they wanna talk about.
I had any added to the time.
Yeah.
But.
We'll tell you if you add.
I I'm sorry, I wanna, I I'm gonna interrupt because I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not, but I will volunteer to drive back there so that you have somebody to lock up after you're done, if it's appropriate.
May I ask what a special meeting, or let's just, we would meet again over the next.
Well, Virginia is also, so you're talking about coming back tonight?
Yes, if you, if it's appropriate for me to offer to do that, then I would say have the staff lock you in and I will be there in twenty minutes to make sure that you have a way to get out and I can send the alarm.
Um I actually, I actually have feedback that people feel unsafe about being locked into the library, so I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Do we feel unsafe as a a group here?
There's a key, there's a spare key that can be left in the front door that you can use to exit if there's an emergency.
Okay. Do we feel that we would like to stay?
Well, Paul is, Paul is saying that he can't.
I do, I have it somewhere.
So that if we want his presence, then we should have a special meeting.
That's correct.
He can be at an executive session.
We, I think it would be better. I think it would be better if he was not. Do people feel the other, do people agree or?
So we have a not with Paul?
Yes.
Not with Paul?
I would like Paul present be, simply because there may be times when we want him in and it would not, we'd be delaying our process more. There may be kinda part of it, we might wanna discuss as a board, part of it, we we may, we may wanna speak with.
Well, why don't, okay, if that comes up, then we have a special meeting.
I think a special meeting might be a way to go.
No, I'm talking, we have both.
We start now.
Yes.
And then we see the things that we need to discuss with Paul and then come back and meet.
Yes.
That way we've already started it, we we can lay the groundwork and then we're not recreating everything, we're doing it while we're fresh and it's in our mind, correct? Okay, since. All right, uh agreeable?
It's fine with me, yes.
Okay. Uh Virginia?
Yes.
She already left. Um thank you very, very kind offer. We're going to accept it.
Okay.
How do we let you know when to show back up? If I can stay and wait until.
No, 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 I'm gonna stay. I'm so.
Oh, you're here.
No, 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 I'm at home.
Okay.
I will come there and I will stay until you are finished.
Comprende? And can, you can get in, right?
Yes, but I, somebody would, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna disconnect now so that I can go in transit and I am going to contact my employees at the main desk to tell them to put the spare key in the front door when they lock up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Virginia is very kind of you to to do that. I very much appreciate uh the extra effort on your behalf of the.
It's an important topic and I think delaying it is not advisable. So um I appreciate that. I will be there shortly.
Okay, um I'm gonna then, we're going to um forget community feedback. Sorry about that, but uh we are, is there any very quick, so sorry about putting it that way, public comment that we haven't that anyone wants to make now? And I apologize that, you know, there's some time pressure, but everywhere we're all closing. Anyone that wanna add now? Okay, thank you, everybody. I I hope you realize that it's trying to find a right way to do this. Um and then come to some very constructive and long lasting solutions.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, Colton.
All right, we're out.
And thank you to the other board members as well for being willing to stay for this conversation.
Um so you should, if we're going into.
We're definitely done.